We'll call the meeting to order in accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-40-8E, South Carolina Code 1987 as amended. All the media in the media area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer from Mr. Govan, followed by the pledge by Mr. Jeffers.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm glad that you're here. Pardon me again that we come to say thank you, God. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask God that you will allow us to conduct this meeting in any feasible manner that is appropriate for the betterment of the students, citizens of Darlington County. We ask God that you guide us as we make these decisions. We ask that you give us travel and rest as we return to our respective homes as well as our participating guests that are here, as we ask in your name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone who wants to sign up for the citizens' committee, we'll go to our consent items. We have our adult education admissions and our regular board meeting on October 14th and our work session on the 28th. Do you all want to take those together for approval or do you want to?
We've got to approve the agenda.
Oh, we've got to approve the agenda. I'm sorry. Can we get motion to approve the agenda?
The move.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Now we'll move on to our consent items. Thank you, Warren.
Madam Chair, I move to be set with the recommendation of adult admissions.
We can do that one. We can do that one together.
The two of them together. I would make a motion to be simple.
The adult education admissions. Okay, do we have a motion on the table for adult education admissions? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now we need for our minutes for the October meeting and then the October work session. We can take those together if you'd like.
Make a motion to approve both.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the October 14th regular meeting minutes and the October 28th board work session minutes. Do I have any conversation? Y'all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to our honors and awards. Looks like we have some volleyball champions that we'd like to recognize tonight.
I have the honor and privilege of recognizing our 2024 PD Conference Champions, Hartsfield Middle School Lady Foxes, now the champions for this year, and the reigning champions for the last eight years. So as a part of your name, we ask that you come up front so you can take a picture with a board chair and superintendent. Of course, we have Reagan Brunson, Reagan Knight, Rava Flowers, Kimber Gane, Chloe Hamilton, Addison Higman, Kylie Kirk, Josemia Medense, Paisley Moore, Carol Little, Claire Smith, Grace Stallwitz, Lily Stallwitz, Allison Wallace, the head coach, Christine Bird, and assistant coach, Robyn Smith. Ladies and gentlemen, our director of athletics, Mr. Henry Hampton, and our principal, Dr. Patina Williams.
Short people in front. Is there something on the volleyball team?
And they were undefeated this year. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think we're good. I can see everybody. We're going to take turns. Parents, just sit down. Look at him first. It's your paparazzi night.
Thank you.
Wait, almost.
My turn, my turn, my turn. Ready?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And we were undefeated this year. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think we're good. I can see everybody. We're going to take turns. Parents, just sit down. Look at him first. It's your paparazzi night.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And we were undefeated this year. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think we're good. I can see everybody. We're going to take turns. Parents, just sit down. for Monday, November 25th, here at 6:00 PM in the training room. Look at him first. It's your paparazzi night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Thank you for your support, parents and family.
And then our next regular meeting is scheduled for December 9th at 6:00 PM here also in the training room. This next section is something I'm really excited about. Dr. Newman, I'm going to let you go ahead and introduce that for us.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, members of our audience online, we had our first high school superintendent's advisory council meeting a few weeks ago where I had approximately 20 juniors and seniors from across the district, and we shared information with each other about a lot of different topics. And what I asked at that meeting is to have a representative from each school come join me tonight, and so I'm going to walk to the other side of the podium here for a second and introduce some very important people to you that have some really good things to say about their school, so.
What words in the mouth?
They got it. They got it. All right. So would you all like to join?
So what we talked about, we talked about a lot of different things at this meeting, but one of the biggest things we talked about that we felt like the board would want to hear about is what would make you or your peers at school feel safer? All right, so at your particular school, and they went and they talked to a lot of their peers and talked to a lot of their friends at school and asked, what would make you feel safer at school? And that was one of the big topics that we all were discussing with each other. I think that was probably one of the longer conversations that we had, and so I felt it important for them to talk to their classmates about this. And then the other item was, what's your favorite thing about the school year so far? And so I'm going to let you all introduce yourselves, so you tell them who you are, what school you're from, and what grade, and then talk a little bit about the safety thing, and then what's your favorite part of the school year. Okay?
Hello, my name is Michaela O'Neill, and I'm from Darlington High School, and I'm in the 11th grade.
Come on up to the podium here.
Okay, so when I went around my school, most people talked about metal detectors as one of their main things. We have noticed that around the school, not everybody seems to want to go through the metal detectors in the morning, and they will either be late to school or come right when they're putting the metal detectors away. So I believe if we have more people around the parking lots and maybe around the metal detector area, making sure everybody goes through, it would help a lot for people to feel safer. My next safety hazard will be locked doors and gates. We have one main gate that stays open all day, and sometimes it is unattended. And I feel like if we have somebody that is a 24-hour surveillance looking, we would have a better feeling wherever we're walking around school. My next point will be classroom doors. I had an encounter the other day where I went to the bathroom and came back, and my teacher just let me in like she, they didn't even look at who I was, or they just opened it. It was like anybody could have been there waiting to come in, and they just let me in. So I thought that was a little bit of a safety hazard. And we can have teachers be more observant, maybe look out the classroom windows to see, you know, it might not just be a student, it could be anybody. We could also have better monitoring hallways and bathrooms. I've seen many things start in bathrooms and just places where people should not be, and there's not always a teacher in sight, so I feel like we have more adults willing to be the bigger person and actually monitor, we'd have a better understanding of that. We also have some incidents with rude students and violent students, and teachers, I see teachers not always address students with this. It seems like they can just do what they want, and teachers are pretty much tired of telling them, hey, this isn't right, or hey, maybe you shouldn't be saying those words, or touching people like that, and I feel like we've had some encounters with that. And maybe if teachers would actually take accountability, that sometimes it can get out of hand, maybe we could feel a little safer at school. And also, the best parts I've seen that people have had this year, most people say sports and clubs are their favorite. And I've seen a few people say that going to new places over the summer and meeting new people, and my personal favorite part of my year has been taking college classes. It is like a weight lifted off my back, knowing that I'm able to go into college not as a freshman and have some extra classes that I won't have to worry about. And in my opinion, I think they're a little bit easier now than later, so that's all I have.
Good job. Thank you, Michaela.
Hi, my name is Gavin O'Neill. I'm in the 11th grade, and I'm representing Hartsfield High School. So my first safety concern is how easy it is for people to walk into the school undetected. For example, during lunch, somebody could pull into the student parking lot, walk all the way to the lunch building, walk to lunch undetected, and not need stoplights. I think a potential solution for this is to have staff members walking around the entry points to stop people who are walking into the school. I feel like this would help prevent a lot of future things from happening. My second safety issue is how easy it is for people to skip metal detectors. During the mornings, we have random metal detector checks, and if somebody just arrives 10 minutes after the metal detectors, they could completely miss it altogether. Or if there are metal detectors, people can inform their friends that there's metal detectors, and they wait until the metal detectors are off and avoid them altogether. I don't know how feasible this solution is, but I think a good solution to this would to have each building having its own metal detector and make every building walk through their metal detector at random. My third safety concern is cybersecurity and the phishing emails that are sent to the whole school. I think a potential solution to this is educate our students on the phishing emails and the dangers of clicking on dangerous links or unknown links. The best part of my school year is my ID classes. I feel like they are more interactive, causing me and my peers to bond with the classes more, making us look forward to our classes more. Moreover, since higher grades are harder to get in ID, me and my friends have a friendly competitiveness that pushes us to become a better students. Also, I feel like ID has really pushed me to become a better student, and that's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Nadia Lekade, and I am a senior, and I'm representing Mayo for Mass Science and Technology. I wrote a speech, so. It says, "Good evening," like I said, I'm a senior, "and a little fun fact about me is that I would be a psychology major." And with taking a psych 201 class through the University of South Carolina Lancaster, I've already learned a lot of things. But one thing that really stuck out to me was learning about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So for those who may not know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs is a tier of needs that humans require to grow and progress throughout their lives. These tiers build upon each other, and you cannot go without a tier. At the bottom of your list, you have your physiological needs like food, water, shelter, and other basic needs you need to survive, but the next tier above that is safety. Without safety, you cannot progress, and the same thing applies in schools. If you do not feel safe in school, whether you are a student and/or staff, you cannot work to your fullest potential, or maybe not even at all. So I wanted to ask you all this, what does being safe mean to you? Is it protecting the ones that you love the most? Is it providing comfort when someone is scared or overwhelmed? Or maybe it's something as simple as chipping your doors? Whatever your definition is, I wanted to show you that Mayo is attentive to a body that image. So let's talk about safety. Despite the location of Mayo, there are some recommendations that I hope to see be put into place soon. The first thing I want to talk about is key card readers on every door, and in addition to those key card readers, more passes or even passes on student IDs. I want to take you back to about a year ago in October. It was around lunchtime, and I was sitting at my normal table, eating with my lunch friends, and conversing with my fellow peers, and suddenly I heard a faint voice to evacuate. And in a blink of an eye, I see people running in every direction. Of course, me and my friends went to the quickest door that we could find, and it was crowded with people shocked with fear and panic, but there were still some people at another door trying to get into the building, and that door did not have a card reader on it, therefore they cannot access that door. And the day after, we even heard talk about saying if they couldn't get into that door, they had a family member off campus who they would run to to get to safety. Thankfully, we were all safe that day, and no one was harmed, but we would have felt more secure that day if we would have had the ability to access all doors to every building. I do want to thank my principal, Ms. Snar, and Dr. Brum for fighting for the key cards that we already do have, but one on every door would have made us feel safer that day and would help us avoid future situations. I also want to propose gating around our premises. For those who may not know, Mayo has opened up a new building called the Annex, and the Annex building is where our students get temporary IDs, drop those quiz grade passes, and other forms of important documents. But the thing about it is that the Annex is in the front of Mayo and practically disconnected from the rest of the campus. There is no gating around that area, and anyone could practically walk in and walk off that campus, which disrupts the environment that we're trying to create at Mayo. Getting around the Annex could possibly be battery operated, should be installed, and to keep students in and strangers out. Some other gated concerns I have is that the gate is left open near the cafeteria. Now, I am aware that that gate is for DCIT, buses, and deliveries that we may get, but that gate is open from the time we get to school until the time we leave school. But DCIT and bus drop-offs only happen at certain parts of the day, so if the gate could open and close at certain times during the school day, that would definitely improve our safety. If gates were battery operated, they would also wouldn't have to be physically open and closed by an SRO, which would keep not only students safe, but our SRO officers are also safe as well. I also want to install more cameras in those hidden corners that maybe people cannot see, and I want to upgrade monitors that we have so camera quality can be better. All of these ideas that I have proposed for you till today were ideas brought up by my peers at Mayo. Now, Mayo is a school where we are striving, where we are told to strive and to define excellence, and we do just that. We work for the status that we do have, and we work hard no ifs ands or buts about it. I am glad to have had this opportunity to be the voice of my school and to wear my feet as fire with the brightest of its colors, and in the future, I hope to see excellence not only in our students, but also in our campus as well. Thank you. And the best part of my school year, I would say personally, in school, it's the college classes and the classes that I do have. Being a student at Mayo and having the opportunity to graduate with more than 24 credits is a great opportunity for me. I'm taking English 101, Math 111, classes that I will be in in college that I've already gotten taken care of. And outside of school, my band experience, this is my sixth and my final year on band, and I loved every single last moment of it. Being social, being able to play an instrument and be musically inclined is something that I've always been in love with, so I'm glad I get to experience that throughout my school year.
Good evening. My name is Zan Chandler. I'm a senior at Lamar High School. Today, excuse me, to address the safety concerns, I talked to multiple of my peers since the day I stepped out of this room, and for the most part, all of them felt that our school was kept perfectly safe. They, excuse me, they even believed that we were kept perfectly safe. As Lamar is a very small school, so we don't face a lot of the problems that Lamar schools have, since we know pretty much everyone, everyone gets along very well, and we know for the most part how everybody reacts to certain things, and so it just kept a lot of the environment very safe, and it kept, and it just made everyone feel comfortable at the school. And well, my favorite, or the best part of my school year is definitely early dismissal.
There's a reason why.
The reason I believe the early dismissal is the best part of my school year is as a working student, it has allowed me to recover and just rest and overall relax before I get ready for work. Working can sometimes be very, can take a lot of energy out of you, and having early dismissal there can let me nap or do whatever I need to do to allow me to conserve my energy for school and work equally.
Any questions from our board members? So you do have a sense of, I'd say, fear in some of your schools. I'm getting diverse. We're here over here, we know each other, we really feel safe. Were you answering the questions just if we were to do something more, we would do this, or you actually have people that have concerns about safety and security? And that's to either of you, anybody who cares, Ash. I got the three here. Most of the two on the end, I guess Hartsfield and Darlington had, I guess, expressed more concern. Is that just if we're going to do something, these are things we'd like to see, or you're actually hearing fellow students really have a concern for the safety around here?
I personally see it myself. I mean, some people, I would say, majority of the people at my school are kind of careless, they're kind of doing their own thing. They're not really worried about everybody else, but me and my honors group, we kind of see these things, and we just feel a need that they need to be something that is a priority at our school.
You have, so during the day, you're thinking about safety and security, so to speak, as opposed to, you're not comfortable sometimes?
Yes, because sometimes kids, like today, we had a small altercation with these girls. They were going back and forth, and in my head, I'm like, what if they didn't go through the metal detectors this morning? What if they have something on them and they might just like take it out of their bag or just something simple like that?
Well explained. That's perfect.
I agree with her, except me and my peers aren't living in constant fear at our school. We feel relatively safe. However, whenever there are metal detectors, it is a reminder that some students didn't go through the metal detector and that it could cause potentially dangerous scenarios to happen. Luckily, it hasn't happened yet, but so I feel like we're not in constant fear. However, if we were to change things, the things I talked about would help.
Great. Other questions?
I think she wanted to add.
I speak for a smaller school. Mayo is pretty small. I would also agree that I do not go in constant fear, but I do know that things happen, and things happen at the most uncertain times. So with the things that I've spoken about and having those improvements, I would feel safer, but I'm not going to say that us as little people, we feel unsafe.
Okay, great. And so I'll finish with this. Reason why I said is we battle on the board all the time about what is enough, what is too much. There's never enough, don't get me wrong. Until, what is, does that ever push the students to feeling just locked in and just what is the deal? We have so many things to go through, so do you feel any of that, like it's we're overreacting, we have too much in place where it's just, it's not, how would you say it, say free or not? You feel too restricted. You follow where I'm coming from? So, you know, on the board, we challenge, we're both ways. We want you to feel comfortable, relaxed, and enjoy where you are, and, you know, sometimes we can over, we can kill it, and we're sitting here going, gosh, we have to go through this, this, and this. So you're not feeling that, right? It's not too much? Good, good.
We talked, that's one of the big conversations we had, was when I listed, you know, what are the better things that have happened this year and then what are the challenges this year? One of the challenges was restrictions, right? Remember, we were talking about that as a group, and when we got to the core of what are the restrictions and why are the restrictions, it came down to safety. So we actually kind of debriefed about, you know...
We're not feeling too restricted, we're not inhibited. Okay, good.
If I'm understanding, you're all correct. I think the two major issues that you, if you had additional money, so we have additional money, would be additional metal detectors, because our schools are old and there's so many entries to the campuses. Number two, I think, would be, if I heard you correctly, would be the Cuban ass or accessible pad, keypad or whatever. Those appear to be your two major suggestions as it relates to enhancing safety. safer, but I'm not going to say that us as little people, we feel unsafe.
Okay, great. And so I'll finish with this. Reason why I said is we, we battle on the board all the time about what is enough, what is too much? There's never enough, don't get me wrong. Until, what is, does that ever push the students to feeling just locked in and, and just what is the deal? We have so many things to go through. So do you feel any of that, like it's, we're overreacting, we have too much in place where it's just, it's not, um, how would you say it, uh, say free or not? You feel too restricted. You follow where I'm coming from? So, you know, on the board, we challenge, we're both ways. We want you to feel comfortable, relaxed, and enjoy where you are. And, you know, sometimes we can over, we can kill it and we're sitting here going, gosh, we have to go through this, this, and this. So you're not feeling that, right? It's not too much. Good, good.
We, we talked, that's one of the big conversations we had, uh, was when I listed, you know, what are the better things that have happened this year and then what are the challenges this year? One of the challenges was restrictions, right? Remember, we were talking about that as a group. And when we got to the core of what, what are the restrictions and why are the restrictions? It came down to safety. So, so we actually kind of debriefed about, you know...
We're not feeling too restricted, we're not inhibited. Okay, good.
Yeah.
If, if I'm understanding, you're all correct. I think the two major issues that you, if you had additional money, so we had additional money, would be metal, additional metal detectors, because our schools are old and there's so many entries to the campuses. Number two, I think, would be, if I heard you correctly, would be the Cuban ass or accessible pad, key pads or whatever. Those are, those appear to be your two major, um, suggestions as it relates to enhancing safety. Is that correct?
There were a few others. There were a few others.
And maybe not more, uh, metal detectors, but more consistent in using them.
Well, no, when I say more detectors, it's because, like, one of the young men mentioned the fact that, for example, in Hartsfield High, you have approximately five or six buildings. And I think the suggestion was to possibly have a metal detector at each one of those buildings as kids came in, because kids coming late for school would not necessarily go through the main detect, main metal detector. So I think his, his suggestion was to add additional metal detectors at those other buildings.
And when you come to school, Dr. Newman, and you're late or whatever, do you not have to go through the office before you go to class, or can you go directly to your homeroom or your first period, wherever we go?
You were supposed to go to the front office.
So in theory, anyone late, we could require everyone late, you're definitely going to get scanned.
Yeah.
But again, I think more consistency would be the easier answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and I, I just want to say that I've had a great time, that, a great day that day, but also since then, just talking to you all. You've done a great job talking to your peers and kind of gaining some more information. What we discussed, see, they got kind of put up to this by their peers, because I said, okay, we're going to have a representative from each school speak and, and lo and behold, everybody started pointing fingers at you. So for the first round, but I, I think they made the right decisions.
Would this, would they be our, so, so there'll be another group? Because that, that was one of the big things that they made deals about is, okay, we'll speak at the first meeting, but you're going to have to speak at the next meeting. But they may get more comfortable when they do it and they come back to Blotley.
Yeah.
Well, so you guys are going to meet monthly, quarterly?
So we meet quarterly.
Okay.
Um, and so the plan is quarterly, we'll come back with another, uh, we'll have four more from the schools and we'll be addressing a different topic.
Do you present topics? Would you allow them to bring the topics to you?
Both.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I'd love to make sure we allow them the opportunity to bring something.
Absolutely.
If, if they have.
I don't have a question. Go ahead. No, no, you can go ahead. Um, I was just gonna say, I don't have a question, but just, you know, I think it's awesome. I love, I love this initiative. I was on a youth council that was connected to our county council when I was a teenager and up in North Carolina at high school, and it was such a cool experience, um, for me. I think it, oh, it's really important for us to learn how to advocate for ourselves and for our community. And, um, so it's a really, I hope you get a lot out of the experience, but I'm also really thrilled to hear from you, because the adults need to be listening to y'all a lot more than they do. In my opinion, I have teenagers, so I can say that, I guess, right now, but, um, I, you know, take the opportunity to productively challenge the status quo and bring your ideas and share your experiences and your perspective, because you're what, you know, you and the 9,000-ish other kids in our district are why we're all here. So, thank you for your time and service to the group.
And the only thing, I, I, I have just one quick one to add. Let's, as all the others, I greatly appreciate you coming and great, appreciate your input. The thing that I appreciated most about your input was not only that you brought problems to us, but you also brought potential solutions. And I think anytime that, you know, in the future, take that as a life lesson. I mean, you're going to face times in the future when you've got problems with things, but also make sure that you come in with, with, with things that we can do to positively impact that. And I think all the things that y'all presented are certainly, there are things in there that do not require money that we could fix. So greatly, thank you very much and appreciate it. And Dr. Newman, if you have anything else, but we look forward to our next crew that comes in and...
I think we have a photo op, is that right? You want to get a picture? So y'all want to walk, come on up this way. We'll just line up right here. Need one more?
Yes, always. Thank you.
And you guys, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we'll also pause if y'all, y'all have got things that you need to do and you need to move on. It, it won't offend us at all. Yeah. All right, anybody have any questions about our budget reports? Whether my minority report that was presented or our quarterly reports, we've got all, all three of them there. Any questions?
I have a question on vendor activity report.
Okay.
On the business group elevator 253,000, what was, what is, what is that?
So we, we have, and Mr. Schu will correct me if I'm wrong, elevators. Uh, we've got a couple that are needing some pretty significant repair. And so that's what that's...
That is.
Yeah. And, and...
This is Mayo and Hartsfield High School.
Or that, was that from just our maintenance, uh, observation, or is that from an inspection that was required? Okay, so we were also hit at two, three of our locations of which were not required. Be careful with what you've got coming in and what they're telling you. Um, we almost fell into a very expensive situation and it wasn't the case. Just want to make sure you look into that a little bit, I get some more detail on how we handle ours. Um, but yeah, it was going to be very expensive and I'm like, we're inspected every day. Are you not, you know, it's, be careful with that. I was wondering if it came from inspection and brought about.
So this is Hartsville, Mayo, where these are. An adult ed.
Hartsville, adult ed, they have, um, Thornwell, that building has elevator.
Okay. All right. And as you know, it's a large island. Okay.
All right. Moving on to our policies, we have policy JIC1, which is our provision of personal electronic devices during the school day. This is our second reading. Do we have a motion to approve that policy?
I'll make the motion, we approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? This is our second reading for that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, action items. We have high school diploma, application for petition.
Motion to approve the application.
Yes, second?
Yeah.
Second? Mister, by Mr. Govan. Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And then we have our Darlington School District Hall of Fame. I'll take a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Education for that final register.
We accept the recommendation for the, um, Hall of Fame.
Do I have a second for those recommendations?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Newman, that leads us into your superintendent's update.
I'll kind of piggyback on our Hall of Fame. Um, this is the second year that we've had the district Hall of Fame and the, the board has approved the recommendations for the new inductees, but they have not been notified yet. So that's why we did not say those names tonight, but we will definitely be, uh, saying those names after tonight, uh, because we want to make sure to notify those folks and their families before anybody else heard about this. And again, as far as the superintendent's update, I, I want to start off by saying, uh, you know, how thankful I am for our veterans. Uh, today's Veterans Day and we've had, um, lots of different types of, uh, presentations and celebrations around the district. I, I attended one at Brockington on Friday. Um, and so first and foremost, uh, we have a veteran with us, Mrs. Hassler, who thank you for your service. Uh, but we also have our board members who have family members that serve. And I, I know Roger, Audrey's husband, um, and many other folks that we have family members and people in this room that have either served. Uh, I see Jackie Lynn at the back of the room with us, thank you for your service, Ms. Lynn. Um, but also family members that have served. So, uh, just want to make sure to take a moment to thank all of our veterans that have served or are currently serving to keep us safe and to ensure that we have the freedoms that we do, um, to live in this great country. The, um, I'll talk through, uh, well, let me, let me start with our strategic plan, goal areas. Um, we've incorporated these into the superintendent's update and tonight I'm just going to focus on student success. Remember, there's four areas in our strategic plan. Student success, staff excellence, community engagement, and efficient use of resources. Um, and so I think it's great to be able to talk for everybody to hear about what we're doing with our strategic plan for all these areas, but I'm focusing on student success tonight. Um, Adult Ed, uh, has reinstated and upgraded their ESL program. They are now serving students from Haiti, Ukraine, Honduras, and various other Spanish-speaking countries. Bayard Rowett Elementary, uh, celebrated Spirit Week. Uh, the school highlighted, uh, that learning is empowering and can be fun, and it culminated with many students from Hartsfield High School's band, cheerleading squad, and football team walking through the building. At Brockington Elementary, they had their first nine weeks awards day, which, and students were, completed their monthly reading logs, uh, and they participated in a Krispy Kreme Donut Party because of the accolades that they had for the first nine weeks. That's always a good motivator. Carolina Elementary, the Driven Dragons Program has gotten off to a great start. As part of this initiative, students are given learning app challenges and when they meet their goals, they are recognized for their hard work and dedication. Our DCIT, uh, students continue to earn industry certifications. And HOSA, DECA, FBLA, and FFA, uh, students in those organizations have attended several leadership and training events. DCIS held their very first ever high school archery tournament, uh, and they invited schools from our district to participate as well as neighboring high schools. There were some great pictures out there, Mrs. Brown, about that. Uh, and DCIS won first place in the team event. So congrats for the first archery tournament. Darlington High School, students were recognized for all As, uh, ABs, and perfect attendance through quarter one, uh, where they were highlighted on social media. They had an all-A Bravo breakfast and a Falcon Bucks to get snacks. Darlington Middle had their club day and homecoming winners celebrated, as well as their exceptional education field trip, uh, to the state fair and seventh grade field trip to Discovery Place. Hartsfield High School had a successful homecoming week, which included Powder Puff Games, homecoming court recognitions, and the football team victory. Congratulations, Mr. Lewis, for that. And also had, uh, a athlete that was selected to the Shrine Bowl. Hartsfield Middle had their honor roll, AB honor roll, uh, and perfect attendance students, uh, as well as students with no referrals, that they were all recognized, um, by selecting treats from the heart cart. JL Kane had, um, on time, all the time, uh, student recognition program where they recognized perfect attendance, on time attendance, and most improved attendance for all students. And then also they were recognizing the academic achievement for ELA and math unit assessments and first quarter honor roll students. Lamar High School, the Lamar High School Whoop Whoop Cart, uh, recognized over 100-plus students for perfect attendance, uh, AB and A honor roll and having no discipline referrals. Lamar Spalding Elementary, fifth grade students participated in their monthly spelling bee and the top 15 were recognized with a homework pass and candy treat. Top three winners were also recognized with an award. At Mayo High School, they had the academic Renaissance and snack break where Mayo, uh, celebrated the accomplishments of their SAT and ACT high achievers, where they had three new students earning 1,200 or better on the SAT and 30 earning 22 or better on the ACT. Uh, they also recognized 27 students that earned a score of three or better on the AP exams. And their freshman student, students participated in the recycled race car competition. The concept encompasses energy transformation, motion forces, material science, and Newton's Law of Motion. North Hartsfield Elementary School had their students awards program where they gathered by grade bands to celebrate the students who have perfect attendance, the A honor roll and the AB honor roll, and students were awarded a certificate along with a brag tag. Pate Elementary, the Terrific Kids Ceremony was held on October 4th in person. Uh, the Pate Local Vocals, who we all have experienced before, uh, performed at the Sweet Potato Festival in Darlington. Um, and then I, I do want to mention a community thing did. The Pate students packed bags for Clear Creek Elementary School in North Carolina that was hit by, uh, the, the tragic floods. And they packed bags that included stuffed animals, coloring books, crowns, and journals and pencils for that school. Rosenwall had their first nine weeks awards program, uh, where they celebrated, uh, the students and also they had a celebration for their excellent report card rating. Southside had their Terrific Kid Program, uh, where they celebrated all of their Terrific Kid Award, uh, award winners for the first nine weeks. Spalding Middle School conducted their first quarter awards ceremony for students and students were celebrated based on character and academics. St. John's had their first quarter awards and honors program, um, and students and their families attended, uh, that with a fall festival. Their Beta Club induction was also held, uh, for their inductees and families. And Thornwell, uh, had their Terrific Kids, uh, students who were honored for accomplishments in math, fact fluency, high passing rates on bi-weekly common assessments, and their ROR awards, ROR rewards program also were recognized students for making positive decisions, supporting, supporting a culture of respect and responsibility. Uh, they also had their Beta Induction Ceremony to honor their newest Beta Club members, and they were privileged to welcome a special guest speaker from Mayo High School, who also serves as the state Beta President, inspiring students with words of motivation and leadership. So that was the focus on student success this month, uh, and just, you know, highlights of what is going on. You heard a lot about awards, the quarterly awards, where we're looking at our students and, and pushing our students to improve, uh, the A list, the AB honor lists, the perfect attendance, I mean, attended. If we have them in school, we can do a lot to help them improve. So, uh, really glad to see all of our schools recognizing that. The next item I had on my superintendent's update is we actually had, I want to highlight a, a teacher, uh, that has been highlighted already, but, uh, we're trying to highlight employees, uh, that have significant accolades at each board meeting as well. And so Tracy Allman, who is our district teacher of the year this year, was actually just named the South Carolina Dance Teacher of the Year. So she is the state, uh, teacher of the year, dance teacher of the year for South Carolina. And so congratulations to Tracy Allman and we're very proud to have her as our teacher of the year, the district teacher of the year as well, um, and, and look forward to, to further success for her. I think it's really important to say for one of the few times that I'm aware of in at least 18 years, that all three of our football teams are hosting a playoff game this week. And so my, my understanding is that's the first time in 18 years that I've been able, or any superintendent's been able to say that. Uh, so congratulations to all of our high school football teams for being able to host first round games this coming Friday. I will be traveling to all three in some form or fashion. Uh, looking forward to seeing how our teams, and all the best to, to our student athletes and our coaches. Thank you for our coaches, um, that, that have helped our student athletes, um, learn what it's like to compete, uh, at the highest level, obviously, because we're hosting playoff games. Uh, and then the last thing I wanted to mention is that we have had some discussions about the, the new, uh, Darlington area elementary school name. And so we are, we are now at the point where we will be going through that process. At our last work session, we had some good conversations with the board and administration about what that process will be looking like. And so for parents and employees at both Rosenwall Elementary and St. John's Elementary at this point in time, parents and employees will have... at this point in time, parents and employees will have the ability to submit suggestions for names for the new elementary school. And so, there will be a form that is going to be sent out digitally to where those, again, parents or employees of those two schools will be able to submit suggested names. There's also the caveat that the names will not be able to contain either of the current names. So, it can't contain St. John's or Rosenwall or any combination of those two. It can't be the name of a person, but everything else is able to be suggested. And so, we'll be sending that information out soon, within the next couple of days here, and we hope to have that information compiled for the board, discuss it at the next work session, and hopefully, the board will be able to make the final decision. The administration will provide recommendations to the board for the December meeting, and that decision will be made in December. So, that's everything I have for superintendent's update.
Awesome. All right, we'll move on to board member input. Ms. Gore, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I want to piggyback off of Dr. Newman in honoring all our veterans on tonight, and thank you for your service, especially give an honor out to my husband, who's retired military, US Army. And I was proud of those volleyball, those middle school, Hartsfield Middle School volleyball, eight-years champions. That is really a great honor, and special thanks to those 14 students who came here tonight to be honored, and I appreciate you all, what you all do. The Advisory Council, that was a very good meeting, Dr. Newman. Thank you for initiating that, and I was glad that the young people was open and honest, so that we know what they really need, and safety is one of their major issues. And one point that caught my mind, he said that when children don't feel safe, they cannot perform as well as they could do with their classes because of that safety issue. So, I'm glad that we know what it is, and I'm glad that the chairman said that we will be able to do something about that, because we want all our children to excel and do well in their subjects. So, Dr. Newman, I'm glad to see that all the principals, all the schools have great reports, they're doing great things, and teachers and principals, we thank you for all you do for these students. And all these outside and other curriculum things that you're doing is also help building them, not just in book learning, but you are building them socially, emotionally, that they can grow to be good citizens in their lives. So, I appreciate all those activities that you all do, because there is purpose and focus in what you're doing. So, I appreciate that. And I promised them tonight that I wouldn't talk long. We had a bet, me and Mandy, that we would not speak long on tonight, but I could not. Thank you all for what you do, and I think, I'm looking forward to going to the, one of the football games this weekend. I don't know if I can make them all, but I'm definitely going to try to go and put my cheer in for them. You know, y'all celebrated a lot of homecomings, and I celebrated my homecoming as well. For, at Mayo High School, I celebrated my 50th homecoming, and we had a ball, we had a wonderful time. Thank you all for allowing us to use the Darlington Middle School facilities. We appreciate that, Dr. Newman, but we trying to get to the Mayo facilities next year, hopefully. But we really enjoyed our homecoming weekend, and I want to ask you a question about these metal detectors. So, you saying that we need metal detectors for every door at each school? Is that what they're requesting?
So, we talked a lot about the metal detectors, and I think the main point they were saying is consistency in their use. So, whether you have everybody in one space coming through it at the same time, making sure that all students come through it at that same space, or if you have them in different locations, making sure that all students that are around those locations. So, that was the bigger thing. You know, we talked how difficult it is on our campuses to do that, for example. You also have to have people that are manning those, and so, we talked about some different ideas as well about that. But I think the biggest, what my biggest takeaway from it was, they want consistency in coverage, which is a challenge.
I just have one more thing, I'm gonna shorten it on tonight. I just want to congratulate Mr. Charles Govan. Mr. Govan is gonna be the president of the South Carolina Department of Education.
School Board.
School Board, I'm sorry, School Board. I wrote it wrong. I ain't gonna get you wrong, the School Board, I'm sorry. South Carolina Department, it's a School Board. And you are the second from Darlington, right?
I would all acknowledge this would be...
South Carolina School Board.
My third, I think. I think I'd be the third.
You'll be the third?
Yeah, I think there was a guy named Mr. Hooks, then there was Ed Hershey.
And then, now you're the... Okay, so, we want to honor him on tonight for that. I thank you for that, for representing Darlington, South Carolina, and we hope you do well. Sorry about that. I want to get you higher.
Everything she said, no, I do really enjoy this. I might, as we go, you learn more from it and how it works, getting engagement from other students, obviously, but also, maybe board members from time to time, if they could go even listen for the discussions, obviously, the feedback rate, but getting them used to talking, presenting, I think is great for the students, but also, really good for us. I think, Wanda, you would maybe be the one recommending we do this council. I think it's a great idea, and to keep growing it, it's great. I guess, pretty good participation.
Excellent.
But yes.
One of my favorite days this year.
Yeah, I bet. I mean, that was just, that was refreshing, you know, to hear it and be able to give feedback, too. And one of the other things, I know you questioned about some of the stuff, but the good thing is, we're working towards all the things that they recommend, and one, obviously, cost, but also, just general logistics of how things work. It takes time, but I think we're right along with where they are in what they're doing, but to have that feedback, it reiterates and supports our efforts, I guess, in trying to accommodate that.
I think that's it, Wanda, I'm good.
Ms. Thompson?
As always, I just want to thank everybody in the district, teachers, staff, principals, administration. What you guys do is just tremendous. You have a hard, very hard job, and I love getting to hear some of the things, you know, that you're doing. I keep up with everybody on Facebook and all the newsletters and everything, just so I at least have that at bare minimum. And I love hearing, you know, the highlights you shared today, and you focused in on student success, but I love that student success wasn't just, just the, you know, first nine weeks awards, but there was field trips and sporting, sports, and there was arts and band and...
Getting out early.
Archery, and, you know, all sorts of, all sorts of things that aren't just, you know, just what we traditionally, sometimes in education, think of as, you know, academic success. So, I love that. Thank you for thinking about the whole child and for all you guys do. And the other thing is just, I love, you know, I love the high school thing. I told you, like I said, I participated in something like that with the county council when I was a student, and, you know, it's just really cool, both ways. And I mean, the kids today are awesome. I, I love them, and they're, and they're not gonna, hopefully, they don't filter too much, and they're gonna tell you like it is, they don't have anything to lose, and let it, let it come, like, bring it to us, you know? That's what, what we need, is that honesty, and I would say, the only thing is, whatever comes out of it, I would love to hear, like, what results, like, what actions we take as a district based on that group, like, maybe at the end of the year or beginning of next year, reflecting back or something, we can do something to sort of wrap up and, you know, show the impact that that had, both, both directions, maybe, somehow. I just want to make sure that their efforts and their transparency and their candidness and courage is rewarded by showing that we've taken actions and based on it, so that they see the result, even though sometimes in this world that we're in, things move really slow, but most of them are juniors and seniors, and I don't want them to think that we didn't listen and take action based on their, their contribution, so. That'll be my only comments.
Mr. Jeffers?
That's it.
That's it tonight.
Like everyone said, the Advisory Council, I think is great. The great thing about them, like you said, they had problems, but they also had some solutions to those problems, so we need to listen. I'd like to thank the Lamar Junior ROTC for participating in the veterans program, Spalding Memorial, Lamar Semitans, and American Legion today, they did a really great job there. Also, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. It's hard to believe that we're into the holiday season, so, but we are. And how about our vacancies? How are we?
The Jeffers report has hosted 15 teacher vacancies.
They're split, split pretty evenly, elementary, middle, and high, two especially.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Govan?
Just a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your calls, prayers, and concerns during my brief illness. I probably missed the last two meetings, which I understand is kind of unusual for me, but given the circumstances, I did not have a choice. Also, just as a reminder to the audience, the playoff games will only allow for the South Carolina High School League passes to be accepted. So, the Apple passes and all of those will not be accepted, and I'm just throwing that out there because I don't want anybody to come to the games on Friday and be disappointed. The other thing is, and I kind of alluded to it, I was gonna wait until January, but I do want to thank the Dalton community, the citizens of Dalton, and my peer board members for your support and confidence in supporting me to this level of president of South Carolina, South Carolina School Boards, Associations, Board of Directors, and President. It has been some time since we've had a president, matter of fact, to be executive for 50 years. So, I will try to do my best to do a positive image for Dalton as well as for the other school boards across the state, those 72 districts in the state. Thank you.
All right, that's all we have. All right, we have personnel actions.
I'm moving through the personnel action.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm waiting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussions? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll move into executive session. Can I get a motion that can move into executive session?
Madam Chair, I'm moving, we're going to executive session to discuss personnel matters, contractual matters, and superintendent's evaluation.
All right, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Move into executive session.
Okay, we have a motion on the table as referenced.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any other motions you'd like to make?
Yes, there's a second motion, and that is I make a motion that we authorize a Christmas bonus of $500 for full-time employees and $250 for part-time employees.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else that we have? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? You got a second? All in favor? And we are adjourned.
We are adjourned. Go ahead.